It is my pleasure to bring the November 2025 meeting of your Hanover Borough Council meeting to order. I request that we all stand and respectfully recite our amazing pledge of allegiance, and I'll follow that by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, let's call the roll.
Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mrs. Funk.
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Hagberg.
Here.
Mr. Kress.
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill.
Here.
Mr. Reekhart.
Present.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
Dr. Rupp. Dr. Rupp, I'm not sure if she is on Zoom or not.
I am.
Oh, okay, thank you, Barb.
Yes.
Solicitor Schultis.
Here.
Manager Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Whitman.
Here.
Secretary Felix, Junior Counsel Alexis Day, and Adeline Stitt. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask our solicitor to acknowledge the executive session held this evening.
Thank you. On November 5, 2025, Borough Council had an executive session from 5:00 PM to 6:42 PM to discuss privileged matters under Section 708A 4 and 5 of the Sunshine Act relating to the Hanover Area Fire Commission. Council also had an executive session tonight, November 25, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 6:55 PM, again, to discuss privileged matters under Section 708A 4 and 5 relating to the Hanover Area Fire Commission.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into Agenda Item 3. For those of you following along, that is a consideration from, to appoint Officer Campo to his position of Sergeant.
We need a motion.
Yeah. I'll need a motion first, Mayor, so keep heading that way, but is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the considerations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mayor Whitman, oath of office.
All right, so I'm going to administer the oath to promote Sergeant Camp, oh, not quite yet, Officer Campo to Sergeant. So repeat after me. Raise your right hand. There we go. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Joseph Campo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And as police sergeant.
And as police sergeant.
For the borough of Hanover.
For the borough of Hanover.
I will diligently.
I will diligently.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
My duties with fidelity.
My duties with fidelity.
I will conscientiously.
I will conscientiously.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Enforce the laws.
Enforce the laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the borough of Hanover.
Of the borough of Hanover.
In obedience to.
In obedience to.
The proper orders.
The proper orders.
Of competent authority.
Of competent authority.
And in full conformance.
And in full conformance.
To the civil service rules.
To the civil service rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of said Commonwealth.
Of said Commonwealth.
Relating the, to, relating to police sergeant.
Relating to police sergeant.
I will also uphold.
I will also uphold.
Obey and enforce the law.
Obey and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
There's more.
I'm doing okay so far.
Okay. I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I knowingly.
Nor am I knowingly.
A member of any organization.
A member of any organization.
That advocates.
That advocates.
The overthrow of the government.
The overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or this Commonwealth.
Or this Commonwealth.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
Or other unconstitutional means.
Or any other unconstitutional means.
Or seeking by.
Or seeking by.
Force or violence.
Force or violence.
To deny other persons.
To deny other persons.
Their rights.
Their rights.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this Commonwealth.
Or of this Commonwealth.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I will not.
That I will not.
So advocate.
So advocate.
Nor will I knowingly.
Nor will I knowingly.
Become a member.
Become a member.
Of such organization.
Of such organization.
During the period.
During the period.
That I am an employee.
That I am an employee.
Of the borough of Hanover, Pennsylvania.
Of the borough of Hanover, Pennsylvania.
Such oath shall be sworn.
Such oaths shall be sworn.
And subscribe to.
And subscribe to.
Before the mayor.
Before the mayor.
Any person falling.
Any person.
I'm sorry, any person failing.
Any person failing.
Or refusing.
Or refusing.
To execute this oath.
To execute this oath.
Shall be discharged immediately.
Shall be discharged immediately.
By the proper.
By the proper.
Appointing authority.
Appointing authority.
Notice is hereby given.
Notice is hereby given.
That this oath.
That this oath.
Is subject to.
Is subject to.
The penalties of perjury.
The penalties of perjury.
A felony to wit.
A felony to wit.
A fine not exceeding.
A fine not exceeding.
$15,000.
$15,000.
Or imprisonment.
Or imprisonment.
Not exceeding.
Not exceeding.
Seven years.
Seven years.
Or both.
Or both.
And disqualification forever.
And disqualification forever.
From being a witness.
From being a witness.
In any matter.
In any matter.
Of controversy.
Of controversy.
Congratulations on your well-earned credit.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a couple of Employee Service Awards and Certificates of Appreciation to recognize. I'll come out to you for this. One of the more pleasurable acts of Borough Council that you get to do is recognizing the people who make it all happen, that being our employees with distinguished service. I'm going to change up the order just because I feel fitting. I'm going to start with Philip Brady. Phil, I'm told you're here. Come forward, Phil. Not here? Okay. Phil will be recognized and receive at a later date a recognition of 30 years of service on December 4th, or he started, December 4th, 1995. So let's give Phil a round of applause in his absence. Is Lori here? Hey, come on up, Lori. You get to stand and face them. I'll tell them all about you. So Lori is getting a 30-year service recognition. She started her career of service with the borough on October 30th, 1995. I remember that. Just kidding. Over the past 30 years, Lori has served in nearly every office role: accounts receivable, utility billing, payroll, assistant to the manager, and now operations manager and the unofficial mom of the Public Works Department. Her knowledge of borough operations is unmatched, and her ability to recall details, procedures, and even decades-old decisions continues to guide and ground the organization. Anyone who has worked with Lori knows about her remarkable memory. She can tell you where just about everyone lives. She generally cares about people, and it shows in every interaction she has with the public, her coworkers, her friends, and family. Her kindness, empathy, and interest in others make her not just a strong employee, but a trusted resource to many. Lori is also known for, oh, excuse me, careful not to mark your place, those who had the privilege of working alongside her can attest to her steadiness she provides during stressful moments and the countless small acts of thoughtfulness that make a big difference, like showing up with homemade brownies. I missed that. For someone who's having a hard time, her impact on the borough and its employees is immeasurable. Joel Krantler, Facility Supervisor, added that Lori is truly an asset to the Public Works Department and to the borough of Hanover as a whole. She and I work together on so many things, and I always know she has my back. We're able to collaborate seamlessly and often know what the other is going to do before it even happens. Her hard work and dedication should never go unnoticed. When the day comes for her retirement, someone is going to have very big shoes to fill. Her knowledge can't be taught or purchased. It's a result of years of service, commitment, and experience that have become a cornerstone of this borough. Even on her days off, Lori never pushes off her job. She keeps communications flowing and makes sure that if an emergency comes up, the right people are informed promptly. We have joked about her and, we have, yeah, we have joked about when her and Tom go to the beach, she takes her laptop along just in case something for work would come up, and Tom proceeds to tell her, "Time to turn it off." Dealing with the public is a selfless job, and Lori exemplifies what it means to serve with patience, professionalism, and heart. Congratulations, Lori. Do we have Chuck? I think I saw Chuck. There he is. Chuck, front and center. Chuck Amspacker, ladies and gentlemen, 30 years of service, May 22nd, 1995. It was a Tuesday. I'm just kidding. While attending HAC during his associative in fire science degree, Chuck was a live-in at Progress Fire Company in Harrisburg. As he was finishing his degree, he was appointed as a probationary firefighter in the Hanover Fire Department effective May 22nd, 1995. He was promoted to captain March 3rd, 2008. After the retirement of Captain Robert Hauck, Chuck assumed command of the fire prevention program. Thousands of students in the Hanover Public School District and Southwestern School District have benefited from the hard work and dedication that Chuck and his fire prevention team put into the Fire Prevention Week activities. Chuck has volunteered to assist on several committees and projects over the years, including serving as our training coordinator, a member of the building committee, and the apparatus committee to design a new pumper. Chuck has always completed his job with the best interests of the community in mind. Career side notes. In his first year as a firefighter, Chuck was assigned a hydrant painting detail. I kind of thought this would be funny, and your reaction tells me it's gonna be. He spilled yellow paint along the sidewalk and street at Ruth and Middle. He learned rather quickly that Hanover is a small town later. In November 2007, while responding to a reported structural fire, a citizen jumped into his lane of travel at Broadway and Fulton and then hit the vehicle he was driving with a baseball bat. And last of the highlights, in October of 2022, Chuck became trapped in a building during a structural fire with another firefighter. His calm, logical thinking permitted him to assist in his own rescue while other firefighters outside tried to assess his location. Congratulations on your service, Chuck. Vicki Roberts. There you are. Forty years of service, January 2nd, 1985. Vicki started as the receptionist for the Police Department on January 2nd, 1985. As of January 2nd, 2024, Vicki has worked 10,200 days or 81,600 hours. I'm just going to let that sit there for a second. She was promoted to administrative assistant on June 26, 2009. In this position, Vicki ensures that police department administrative functions are accomplished in a proficient and timely manner, as well as seeing to the needs of the department's officers regarding benefit and equipment issues. In her time off, Vicki enjoys traveling with family and friends and being Nana to her grandchildren. Congratulations, Vicki, on 40 years of dedicated service. Just for point of order, I don't think Kevin Starner, yep, I went over that. You're still not here? Or Jeff? All right. We'll save this one for last. Dory Felix, 40 years of service, May 20th, 1985. During Dory's 40 years of borough, with the borough of Hanover, represent far more than a long tenure. They reflect a career built on intelligence, integrity, and a genuine care for the people she works with and serves. Over the past four decades, Dory has contributed her talents to a wide range of roles. She worked in code enforcement, conducting weed and sidewalk inspections, served in the former word processing department, and became widely known as the person everyone turned to for technical writing and editing support. Her ability to take complex information and transform it into something clear, polished, and precisely, and precise is truly unmatched. Early on, former borough manager Bruce Rebert recognized her potential and encouraged her to take the role of Borough Secretary, seeing the intelligence and promise that would shape her career. That insight proved right. Dory became a go-to expert in borough processes, procedures, and records. Dory has a strong moral compass and stands her ground when she believes something is right or when she knows it isn't. During years when the borough was transitioning from one manager to the next, she was a constant source of stability, professionalism, and calm. Her steadiness helped keep the organization running, compliant, focused, and grounded during those times of uncertainty. Dory is a trusted friend and confidant, never judgmental, always compassionate, and able to see situations from many perspectives. Coworkers and council members know that they can talk to her about anything and that she will listen with understanding, offer thoughtful insight, and protect their trust. When the borough needed its first website, Dory taught herself the necessary software and built it from the ground up, yet another example of her resourcefulness and willingness to step up where she's needed. For 40 years, Dory has been quite, been a quiet leader, a source of wisdom, a steady hand in a challenging moments, and a genuinely good person to work alongside. Her contributions, both professional and personal, have shaped this organization and supported the people. She sits during these meetings, and you see where I sit during these meetings. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you for all of the experience you brought to my first day and to all of the kindness you'll bring my last day. Thank you, Dory. As a point of order, as Chair of the meeting, I'm going to declare right now that Council is going to move to addressing Agenda Item 6.03. That being, I believe there is a motion to remove it from the agenda, excuse me, or to table it from the agenda?
So moved.
And there's any discussion on tabling 603? I'll call the question. All in favor of tabling 603, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. 603 will be tabled. With that being said, I would like to try to now move into Agenda Item 4, that being public comment, and request that we originally intended to have two, one comment period without 603, one with. So I would request that anyone who would like to speak to Agenda Items not being 6.03 come forward at this time as I recognize you. And again, you will specifically address anything on the agenda not 603. The first submission I have or request is from Robert Holt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
The, I'm going to ask that the councils step back for a moment. It's an inconvenient, but look again at the budget. I don't think it's ready for passage, and there's a lot of questions. And I think you need to look long and hard at some of the things that you're spending money on. We can't afford a police officer, but we're giving over $100,000 in subsidies to business in the form of subsidized rents at the market house, $40,000 for the Hanover Main Street. I just don't know where the priorities are. But here's the first priority. The first priority is to protect the public, and the second priority is to be good stewards and faithful stewards of the financial resources. The other thing is, when you publish the budget, and I know the salaries of the department managers get voted on in December, but I really would like to see in the budget advertised some supplement somewheres that shows what are the proposed budgets, proposed salaries for the individual department managers from the borough manager on down, because there's sizable chunks of money that, in those sections of the salaries, and you hear all kinds of crazy rumors. One is, one of the, one of the, one of the managers is going to get a $19,000 pay raise. Now, whether that's true or not, you know, we'll wait and see. However, I think if you're going to advertise for public comment, you should put it all on the table and let people see before you take a vote on the budget. I think the bar, the budget is out of skew, and it doesn't align with the values of the community, and given the issues we have, I just think it's a little bit of an affront, especially when I see there was a Parks and Recreation van purchased, and it never came up at a discussion at a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, nor did it ever come up at any of these council meetings. I just don't know. I just, sometimes I wonder if council, you know, I don't know who's running the show, who's, who's doing the oversight. And that is your job, and sometimes it involves asking hard questions and insisting on getting good answers to the hard questions, sir. And I just, it befuddles me. I can't explain it. The logic's not there. The other thing is, I see, you know, we're going to apply for a grant, and again, talking about priorities are out of skew. You're going to apply for a grant for $300,000 for a generator for the police station because you did, somehow you didn't have enough money to include it in, in the project when you, when you sent everything out, after you sent everything else to bid, you know, you didn't have enough money. You went over budget. The bid came way over budget. You trimmed it back, and, and, and I don't know, I mean, you can spend a lot of monies on things, but I don't know how you can't spend money for an emergency generator for the police department and the emergency facilities, the public safety. I, I don't know. It's just. I, I don't know, it's just, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And I just think it's time for the council to be honest and take a step back and, and just admit that some of you really don't know when it comes to the budget, what you've been voting on and, and what you're about to pass. So I thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, we have no other pre-agenda public comments, other than if anyone is wishing to comment, one line, community, media?
Those joining us via Zoom, you are now able to unmute yourselves if you would like to address council.
No, your, your, your com, your, your request was for the second. Your, your request was for the second, I'm, I'm still in the first. Not 601, just the, the agenda. Community, anyone? Okay, we will close the first public comment portion of the meeting. The Chair asked for, turn the page over and move into Agenda Item 5. I request a motion for consideration of the consent agenda. Any further discussion on the consent agenda's approval? Saying none, I'll call the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Unopposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move into Finance and Personnel, Agenda Item 6, Vice President Kress.
6.01, approved legal advertisement for ordinance designation, $40,000 allocated for Main Street allocation.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Anyone wishing to comment? Saying none, I'll call the question, all in favor of 601, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? I hear one nay, the rest in yea, motion carries. Counselor Kress?
6.02, 2026 annual HEDC allocation, approved legal advertisement for ordinance designa, designation, $30,000 allocation.
I would second that and also reference the point of the I mean, I would second that and reference the milestones that are required to get the three grants of $10,000.
It's maneuvered a second, anyone wish to comment further? Seeing no requests, I'll call the question for consideration of 602, all in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
No.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask for a show of hands on nay, I believe I heard three, one, two, three, four? Okay? Can I also now ask for a show of the hands who were yea in the affirmative to 602? One, two, three, four?
What about Barb?
Barb, are you still with us? Community, is she still? She unmuted? She's muted? Counselor Up, if you can unmute yourself, we'll count your vote. All right, the motion passes. At this time, we will have a report on the Fire Commission from staff. Finance Director Shelton?
Thank you. Borough staff was requested by council as a result of previous executive sessions to present to public information regarding the Hanover Borough participation in the Fire Commission, and that's what I'm going to discuss this evening. So we'll go on to Page 2. Challenges in Hanover's borough's participation. The Fire Commission management has led to rapidly increasing costs over the years, placing an unfair burden on Hanover Borough taxpayers. The Commission has received qualified, which is unfavorable, opinions on its financial audit for four consecutive years for failure to provide sufficient evidence to support EMS billing and subscriptions, which poses a compliance risk, yet the issue has remained unresolved for four years. Operating a self-sustaining advanced EMS services is challenging and requires strong controls and procedures. The Fire Commission has struggled to effectively manage its EMS operations, in fact, this year resulting in an approximate year-to-date loss through October of $1 million. The budget next year for Hanover Fire Commission, 65% is attributed to EMS services, which are unrelated to fire protection. The rising cost of maintaining a service that should be financially self-sustaining make it an inefficient use of borough funds. The Borough will continue to employ its own firefighters, who are trained and to provide basic life support when needed. By outsourcing advanced life support to organizations such as Wellspan, UPMC, or another qualified provider, residents can continue to receive full range of EMS care without additional cost to the Borough. The quality of EMS services will remain consistent and will not decline as a result of this transition. The Borough already has a strong fire department in place, which is supported by the Borough's financial controls. A 2022 external fire study conducted by the Pennsylvania Municipal League confirmed that maintaining separate fire services offers the same level of protection at lower cost of operations. This was presented at public meetings to the Fire Commission in August 2023 and the Borough Council in October 2023. Remaining in the Fire Commission may require additional property taxes or implementing a dedicated fire millage to cover the Commission's escalating costs, which could burden the average household by an additional $5 to $700 a year. Turning to Page 3. This is a pictorial representation of the, the costs of pre-fire commission and post-fire commission. And it's projected out from approximately when the Fire Commission was in full operations in 2019 through 2036. We estimate that if we were not in the Commission through 2036, we'd save about $11 million during that period of time. On to Page 4. This is a EMS decision by another local York County municipality. This is a real-life decision. So the following case is real case example that reflects the same challenges that the Borough is facing today. Jackson Township in York County was paying the Spring Grove Ambulance Company about $125,000 a year for EMS coverage. Over time, the ambulance company became financially unstable and was no longer able to sustain operations. Recognizing the growing risk, Jackson Township pushed for alternative EMS provider and encouraged the dissolution of the Spring Grove Ambulance Company. The ambulance board ultimately agreed to disband and solicit replacement proposals from Wellspan and UPMC. According to the Jackson Township manager, the transition created significant drama and pain within the community and the township, but ultimately Wellspan assumed EMS operations in 2023. With Wellspan taking over, Jackson Township no longer had to provide financial support for EMS services. The Township's actions were intended to protect the long-term interests and safety of its residents. On to Page 5. So clearly, the council believes that the current status of the Fire Commission is unsustainable in its current condition, and here are some options for the, for the Borough. The potential of leaving, leaving the Commission, working with the Commission and Penn Township to facilitate a transition over a 12-month period of time, develop and implement a transition plan outlining vehicle equipment allocations, readiness, assessment, and resource needs for the Borough to resume independent fire operations. Submit a request proposal to external EMS providers to ensure uninterrupted emergency services to Borough residents. We would adjust the 2026 budget to cover any transition costs anticipated before a one-year go-live date, which would have been January 1st, 2027. Ensure that the Borough continues to provide and maintain the same mutual aid, support to neighboring municipalities as it's done in the past. If we remain in the Commission, create a new IMA agreement, intermunicipal agreement with Penn Township, requiring direct financial decision control over the Fire Commission. Require reorganization of the Commission, including leadership change. Improve financial controls and accountability to achieve unqualified favorable audit opinion. Outsource EMS billing to a qualified billing agency familiar with supporting external audit needs. Create a long-term capital plan and operational plan for predictable and planned expenditures with the, within the approved annual budget. And then also consider a tax increase or fire millage to provide direct support for the Fire Commission going forward, again, if we remain in the Commission. That, that concludes the, the study that, again, was commissioned by the, the council for me to present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up for the, the public comment, is there any council comments?
Well, I guess I'd like to make one if I may. I would like to thank us as an organization for stepping back and relooking at what we're doing here and making sure we have all the data to make the correct decisions, whether, whatever the outcome needs to be, the, the improvement methodology needs to be. So I'm glad we didn't go too far too fast, so I thank us all for that.
Okay, at this time, I will I'm sorry, you missed that, we asked, yeah, that you rec, you recognized, if you recognized, go ahead, I got you.
I, I agree with Scott Rolland, I'm glad we're taking some time to look at this, I think we need to vet out all the options. I believe that the Fire Commission is worth considering trying to save. Outside of that, I mean, let's see where it goes from here. I'd like to hear comments coming from out there.
Right, and I guess I'll close with a, a, a general comment that I think is important to note, that there's been criticism of this council getting to this point, at this point. But part of the reason we got here was that this Fire Commission that we're, we're discussing now, and we were going to proceed with potential movement going forward, presented to this Borough Council a budget for 2026 on September 4th that included a 51.8% increase in the Borough's contribution. It was amended on October 10th to, was reduced to 48%, and that amount is a total of $438,79. That's why we're talking about ways to improve the relationship with the Fire Commission, to provide hopefully better service, or at least comparable service, at a more financially responsible way. And we enjoy the opportunity to engage the public going forward. At this time, I will open it up for public comment, for anything post-meeting, as well as, because I think a lot of you showed up for maybe some type of expression about the Fire Commission proposal. I'll open it up, and I will ask you if you, I'll, I'll read your name because you submitted something, and it was, again, mostly for the Fire Commission, if you want to withdraw your comment and save it for when council does take this as a formal motion, which, by the way, will be communicated in a written format and placed on our website, and it will be part of our formal agenda. I have Ann Baker. State your address, please, Ann, and for the record.
Sure, Ward 5. So I'm pleased that, as you've said, you've taken a breath. Obviously, the, the information that you've provided tonight is, is concerning, and I think it, it warrants a look. What I'm particularly concerned about is that the public had no inclination of this. There was no indication, there was no comment, there was not the normal procedure where we would hear about it in a subcommittee before it shows up, either in the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, or on the final council meeting, so that we would have a chance to, to have some public comment. I would also note that on the Borough's website, under the Fire Commission's meetings and agendas, the agendas are available back through 2023, 22, there are no minutes available. And so it's really difficult, as a public citizen, to follow what's going on with the, the Fire Commission. And so I would just ask for a little bit more transparency, so that we can all be informed and hopefully support the decision that the council will do moving forward. Thank you.
That got written down by several people, so I'm sure we're on it. Next, I have Mark Elksness.
Good evening. My name's Mark Elksness. I live at 354 Azalea Drive in Hanover, Pennsylvania. I am a Penn Township Commissioner, I'm also the co-chair, VP of the Fire Commission. We've worked hard over the years to try to make this successful. I just want to reaffirm to everybody on this board, that Penn Township wants this to work. I've talked to many of you, some of you recently, we want this to work. You know, the Hanover Area Fire and Rescue, you know, it has its problems, there's no doubt. These problems can be fixed, we need Hanover Borough as a partner to make these problems go away, solve these problems. I do have one thing that caught my attention when Mr. Shelton was talking, comparing Hanover Borough and Penn Township combined to Jackson Township, we're four and a half times larger than Jackson Township. Just as a note to the public here this evening, anyway, I'm going to move on. Penn Township believes the best way forward is to provide fire and EMS services to both municipalities, the potential loss of service, equipment, and most importantly, personnel, the people that save lives, you could ask Mr. Fuentes about that. Will be costly, and it's going to be a lot more than the $11 million over a couple years that Mr. Shelton spoke of. We need to address some internal issues. You know, there are things that need to be fixed, we can't do that without, without a partner, and that would be Hanover Borough. So this evening, I was expecting you guys to have a vote, I'm glad that you pulled this back off the agenda. I have a lot of respect for the people that stepped up and took this off the agenda this evening, but I would say to you, we need to move forward with this, and we can't do it without Hanover Borough. Unfortunately, this is going to be kicked down the road for a while, I guess. The next time this comes up, I would just ask everybody on this board to consider staying in as a member of the Hanover Area Fire and Rescue. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Tom Allison.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I originally came here to introduce myself, if most of you don't know, I was elected president for the 2026 year for the Hanover Fire and Rescue. But after reading the agenda and taking numerous phone calls, I sort of switched my agenda around and said, let's see what we can do to save this commission. I was honored to be asked to be representative for the Fire Commission, because I feel the coalition between the two municipalities is the best way to serve and protect the citizens of Hanover area. What I'm asking for both municipalities is for a full commitment to stay on task, make this commission better, and run smoothly, as it was intended to be for community safety. As we move forward, there will be issues we need to overcome, whether it's manpower, management, budgeting, equipment. We will not be all on the same page, but we have to pu, have to do what's best for our community. We need to protect our constituents, and we know that the days of volunteers is a thing of the past as a full-time thing due to our growth. With two municipalities so close in proximity, the coalition we have in place is the best way to protect our citizens. If I didn't feel this way, I would not have gotten involved. As we move into 2026, let's make it a point to work together to make this commission the best possible. My last point is the financial savings. I don't do reports, but I use a lot of common sense as I did when I was Commissioner. We break up, there's a big divorce, there's, there's a lot of money involved. There's a lot of money involved, just to separate that. Now, on top of that, everybody's hiring more captains, more chiefs, more assistant chiefs. That's a major labor expense. Let's look down the road, when both municipalities need ladder trucks. If anybody hasn't been around, ladder trucks, two-plus million per each one. That's on each responsibility of each municipality. But if we have this commission, it's one ladder truck, split two ways. As we approach 2026, I moan for any discussion to help this commission succeed and grow as it is intended to be. We do to think public safety first, and be transparent with all our constituents that this affects. Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Justin Highland.
Thank you. Justin Highland, 18 Benjamin Drive, Penn Township. Come before council tonight not just as a lifelong resident of Hanover, but also as a Penn Township Commissioner for these last eight years. That makes me lucky enough, as many of you, to have a unique perspective here on local government and how we work together as a team as of late. Regardless of which municipality you live in, what our elected officials choose to do here has a profound effect on everyone in the Hanover area, whether that's budget, as you all know from going through it recently, personnel, parks and rec, or any other important decisions that all the residents here trust you all to make. When that decision tonight, we thought, was whether or not to stay in the Fire Commission. Shouldn't be just about budget numbers and governance, although that has its place. It should also be about guaranteeing the fastest, most reliable emergency response when residents need it most. As we all know, modern fire and EMS are resource-intensive, both monetarily and personnel-wise. The Fire Commission was created seven years ago, with the goals to provide efficiency, staffing resilience, shared training, and reduced equipment redundancy through a cooperative system with each municipality. It has been a long seven years, as you all know. You've been there for all of it, so... And I know some of you are not happy with the Fire Commission. However, whether it's budgets, controls, or any other portions of it, I implore you tonight not to withdraw from the Fire Commission, but to work together with Penn and others towards fixing the issues with it. In our intermunicipal talks in the past, we discussed making changes to the Fire Commission to address any and all concerns either municipality has moving forwards, and I propose, as suggested, that we draft a new intergovernmental cooperation agreement to address those concerns, rather than leaving the commission altogether. The residents of this town trust their elected officials to make decisions in their best interests, and when those decisions affect who, how quickly, and how skilled someone shows up when they have an emergency, that decision should never be taken lightly. Thank you for your time.
I have Donna Sweeney. Some thunder's being stolen.
Hi, I'm Donna Sweeney, Penn Township Manager, Borough Resident, 404 Hedrick Court. I stand before you tonight to urge you to reconsider stepping away from Hanover Fire, Hanover Area Fire and Rescue. The combination and the working together amongst most municipalities, both municipalities, along with the support from the fire volunteers, is instrumental to our community and our fire service. I can't top Commissioner Elksness, Commissioner Highland, Mr. Allison, very valid points. I just urge you to really seriously think about what you're doing. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next, we'll have Sandy Mau.
Sandy Mau, General Delivery. We still have issues with the library. We arrived the other day to find a posting that announced that the library hours were going to be cut. Now, this is after the Friends has increased their fundraising, and also the Hanover Public Library Association has increased their contribution. So we're sitting there wondering why those hours have been cut. Secondly, there's a... Your informants have returned, and this evening, they decided that they were going to go into the bathroom. One male went in, did not lock the door. Another one, a new one on the block, entered in, did not lock the door. Here comes a woman, who's going to go into the bathroom and walks in on them. Now, my suggestion is that you have them have a sign-up, so that we know who's going in and out of the bathroom at multiple times throughout the day, and, to the credit of the staff tonight, they were able to stop a stuffing of the toilet again, because it went in and checked and found that all the paper towels and everything had been stuffed into the toilet, and I think those have been causing other issues throughout. Finally, the theft of my research materials from the desk when I go away for about two minutes or so and come back is unacceptable, and all it does is make me start over. I'm not going to give up. I'm going to continue. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Cheryl Warner.
I live in the 5th Ward. Can you hear me? Okay. I live in the 5th Ward. First of all, kudos to the fire departments. Thank you very much. And this happens to come on the heels of this, what I'm about to say, is a topic about North Hanover Mall, and it being recently condemned. And if it wasn't for the firefighters that were out that day, they would not have seen that the so-called wall was collapsed after the rain and the wind. So I have questions about how we got that far. I mean, as far as, three years ago was the fire, and one of my, and one of my questions is, why was there no action taken within like a year of, with Namdar Group, which owns the mall? Why wasn't anything, was there anything like written notice, or, you know, you have like such a time, you know, within limits to get the wall permanently fixed? Also, like, any citations issued after the fire? Was code enforcement out there checking it from time to time? Because it's not like, it was like a part of the mall where you can't see it. I mean, anybody that goes down Eichelberger can visibly see it. It's not like it's, you know, like a small corner. It was like a huge, you know, store structure that was taken down because of that fire. Was there any recent lawsuits to the, you know, to the owners? Is there anybody, you know, going to the registration of the rentals and things like Was there any, is there anybody within 40 miles that you can contact that say, hey, you know, you gotta get this wall fixed, basically? Did you try to take them to court over it? Are there any loopholes or codes or ordinances, well, loopholes in the codes or ordinances in code enforcement? Are they too vague? Do any revisions need to be made of this kind to avoid anything like this again? The destruction, again, is like, is in plain sight. Everybody could see it. And I was just, I'm just wondering how, could it have been ignored all these years? And, you know, prior notice to, I feel bad for the people that have livelihoods out there, that have been out at the mall, especially Jerry and Sal's, out there a long time, and all of a sudden, she had to close up shop that day, no notice. So, again, it's questions. I don't understand it. I know there's other people that don't understand it. I've had conversations with other residents, and they're wondering the same thing I am, why it took so long, and why now, all of a sudden condemned, you know. There could have been steps in place that could have prevented it. There was other malls in the area, too, that have notices, but they didn't have to go to be in a long-awaited, you know, condemning of them. So, again, it just doesn't make sense to me. Maybe you can help me make sense, because I don't... All right. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask something? I've been getting calls on this very thing. Is it a possibility that we can get to the bottom of this, how it happened? Because I know we have enforcement in our community, and I think that we're beholding to the people to have a greater understanding on how this happened, because if we don't, it could happen again. So I'd really like to address that issue, if it's possible, to put it on the website on how that occurred.
I believe the manager and staff is aware that, obviously, that it has occurred, and you could comment privately, I guess.
Tim could also comment on this.
Or the solicitor.
Sorry, this listener would have more information than what I would on this. And I believe that we're not permitted to comment on some of this.
Yeah.
It's a pending enforcement action with the owner of the North Hanover Mall, so it's not appropriate to comment on it publicly. Anyone who has questions about it can certainly contact the Borough, and we can provide what information we can, but there are certain information we cannot.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. At this time, we will hear from the current Chairman of the Fire Commission, Mr. Michael
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't know if I can say much more than what Mr. Elksness and Mr. Allison have said. I will say that the Fire Commission, over the last two and a half years, has made great strides, none of which I would ever take credit for, but I'm proud to be a part of that commission. We're positioned to continue that, we're poised to make, continue to make strides. You know, beyond that, what's already been said, I don't know what more I could say. Some of you may have been told that my reasoning for leaving the commission is because I'm fed up with the commission, that nothing could be further from the truth. My reason for leaving is I have two businesses that are requiring more and more of my time, and unfortunately, I just can't give the commission any more time, especially moving in the areas we could be moving to. So I thank you for your time.
And Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, the adoption of the budget for advertising, it's disappointing. I think it's an affirmation of unrestrained spending with no regard for the impact on the citizens, and a misallocation of resources when we have bigger priorities than some of the things that money is being spent on. And just, when I stand in this room, I'm constantly reminded of the excess and lavishness that just seems to continue, unbridled, and I don't know where the council is in your minds. At times, I feel like you're not physically here. I apologize, but that's the way I feel. I think it's a big disappointment, the Fire Commission, I think gentlemen like Mr. Newman, who I've watched over the last three years, have looked, have worked hard, have worked with persistence to be good leaders. But I just think at this point, you need to pull away from the commission, reorganize, and really think through about what you're going to do next in terms of combining the two operations. The way I see it is, this is another situation, like the library, like other deals we make with other municipalities, where the Borough residents come out being the losers. And once again, this panel picks winners and losers, month after month, year after year, and we end up being the guys who pay the unfair burden. And it just, it just doesn't seem right. I've heard the breakup of the Fire Commission being likened to a divorce, and how messy it is, but I think there maybe should have been just as much forethought and concern about forming the commission and entering into a marriage. More thought had been given to that, maybe we wouldn't be here at this point. But I think a bigger thing is the fact that this happened, unqualified audits. That's a big statement, when your audit people will not qualify an audit. There's something wrong, and, well, we see. But the fact of the matter is, for month after month, at public safety meetings, at this council, and at Fire Commission meetings, and I sat through a lot of them, I still do, none of this ever came up. And it was like, everybody said, let's do damage control, let's not talk about it where the public can get a good look at it. And so it just, on and on and on. And there were months when the Public Safety Committee meeting, when the Fire Commissioner was there, and other people were there, the meeting was canceled for lack of business, and that would have been a prime opportunity for this to have been discussed, in a reasonable way, that people could come with some informed opinions, instead of the garbage we see on the internet and social media, and people throw things around with any, without any restraint or concern about what they say. Say what you say about me, I'm proud of it. I bear it as a badge of honor. If you don't like me, I'm not here to be liked. I'm here to uphold my rights and protect people who can't protect themselves, but at least I say it to your face. At least I look at you in the eye, and if you don't like it, you can come over, you know, and just tell me you don't know what you're talking about, young man. Good luck. And, but, at least I'm here. And I don't know about the others, but if, I think if more people came and paid attention to this, we wouldn't be in this mess. But, and I think there needs to be a look again at the meeting agendas that you just passed, the meeting schedule, and not let committees like Public Safety go once every two months for meetings. Or the Stormwater Authority, which is in the middle of a major consideration for a gasification plant, and they're only going to meet a few times a year. They need to be meeting every month, and same way, and this stuff should be discussed at the Public Water and Sewer Committee meeting. We just need to have more of this stuff put out in front of us, in an open forum, where people can understand it, give thoughtful input, and not have it, you know, I'm sorry it's an inconsideration. I know you all volunteer, it takes time, but you've put yourself in a place where you're deciding the fate of other people. You're doing things that will impact their lives and change the way they kind of, you change their lifestyles in some ways. And it's important, and it's something I think about every day in my own job, where I make decisions, and it bothers me sometimes, that impact people, and I just don't know how people can be kind of laissez-faire about the fact that what you're doing is going to have a profound impact on people's lives in this community, and they're your neighbors. They're your neighbors. So here's the parting thought. You know, we had a thought about World Kindness Day and everything, and being nice to your neighbors and doing thoughtful gestures, but how about we have public meetings in the government where we actually listen to each other, and people can come here, instead of slinging stuff on the internet, where there's no restraint, and there's no conviction of standing and looking at somebody in their eye and saying, this is what I think. I think we're done with the commission for a while. As much has been put into it, but we're at a brink where we need to really step back and rethink it, and just take our lumps. Thank you.
Okay. Is there...
One comment after Bob made that. I've also gotten calls in which people have come to the meetings, and they were canceled, and they didn't know until they got here. What I have a problem with is trying to understand how the head of a committee does not know it's been canceled until the day of, and then I would like to know who cancels those meetings, and what purpose they canceled it. And I really think that we were straightening out things, Bill, but we can do better. better. Okay, so I just have to let you know that the people are concerned about that. They waste their time coming up to a meeting, and it's not there. And I think you should continue to have the meetings because the public wants to make comments, and if that meeting only has the public come and make comments, you know, for further meetings, I think that we do well to listen at this point. Thank you.
Noted. Counselor Funk. At this time, I will ask if anyone was missed in their submitting for a second public comment. Okay, community media, is there anyone online who would like to address counsel?
Those joining us via Zoom, you are now able to unmute yourselves if you would like to address counsel.
Hello?
I'm sorry. Someone said hello?
Can you hear me? Yeah, this is Ray here from, used to live out in the 553 South Franklin Street in Penn Township.
Okay, Ms. Shear, go ahead.
You guys were talking, yep, you guys were talking about EMS and stuff like that. Here's the thing. When you guys, if you guys would ever leave Penn Township or anything like that and go to U M P C or Wellspan, once you're hired through them, unfortunately, whatever county puts it out to dispatch, they will be leaving Hanover or any of those to go take care of calls in other jurisdictions when the EMS is short on staff right now. I don't think you guys should leave. I think you guys should be able to stay where you guys are at. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Community media, anyone else? Okay, we will close the second and final public comment portion of the meeting. Before I make under general announcements, I guess there is, we appreciate you exiting the premises within 15 minutes of adjournment. Also, there is a reminder that the Christmas Parade, are we still calling it the parade? Is at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 29th, and a tree lighting ceremony will follow at 6:00 p.m. Looks like there are other activities can be seen on the Main Street Hanover website. Parting thoughts from the chair on the, on the topic of the Fire Commission. I believe I'm right in, in characterizing that the founders of this municipality, your Hanover Borough, fought fires and had to deal with fire protection day one, and until the Borough of Hanover entered the Fire Commission jointly with Penn Township in the year approximately 2018, 19, we and they did just that. You've been shown a graphical representation of the costs, which your elected officials are here to manage, to monitor. On behalf of all of us, I'd like to say we're thankful for your engagement. We're thankful for your passion. We're thankful for your perspective, for your knowledge, for your involvement, for everything. But at the end of the day, we have to balance everything. We have to balance the quality of the safety of the response, for the provision for the residents' safety and well-being. We also have to try to do that as financially best as we can. That's what we do in elected government. I would ask you all to, in intervening time, before counsel comes back to the subject, you've seen one particular graph, and that was the economics. Engage your local firefighters, engage your borough personnel, engage anyone you can, and I'd like a part of the topic of conversation to be the level of service. Was the level of service not enough prior to the fire, the creation of the Fire Commission is a question I think should be asked. Is the quality of service now better because we're in the Fire Commission? I asked the Fire Commission months ago, and I have yet to get an answer, as a member of this public that we all share together. By paying more for fire and emergency services, can someone tell me how we're going to be safer? Is it going to save one life, 10 lives? What is paying more going to do? This, this board has not taken on this decision lightly. This is with the utmost sincerity and with humility that we are entertaining these decisions as we entertain all decisions on your behalf. I want you to know that as we head forward into the season of what in two days will be being thankful. I'm thankful for your here. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve you. We are thankful for the opportunity to serve you. At this time, I will request a motion to adjourn. Second, hold on, favor say aye, please. We adjourn. See you next month, and happy Thanksgiving.